Very good. I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Pottstown Borough Council as of January 4, 2017. Would you kindly rise for an invocation, actually a moment of silence and then a pledge to allegiance to the flag.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first we'll have our subcommittee reports. Counselor Culp, infrastructure.
There was no meeting.
Economic development, business, anything? Nothing. C is transportation, Counselor Culp.
Yes. Your, the minutes are in your packet, but I'm just gonna speak about a little bit of what went on. Every few months we have a transportation meeting that has to do with the airport and Septa, I mean our part, our buses and that type of thing. So I'm just gonna give a few highlights of what we discussed. In the airport, Dave Jones of Delta Airport Consultants presented a project status report, 12-year plan, BOA planning was held on 10/31/16. Plan as outlined, followed, design for apron and T-hanger taxi lane construction, reconstruction of East Apron and T-hanger taxi lane, acquire easements and construct hangars 2020, removal of obstructions, eliminate trees on properties where easements have been obtained. Discussion on possible increase in funding to general aviation airports. There's aeronautical study done, Delta is analyzing data and will provide a preliminary report in March. 50-10 inspections, high grass clearing has been completed as well as removal of many trees, grant funds available for tree removal and easements. FAA drone guidelines, and I know a lot of people might be curious about this, and we have a little bit of, a little bit here that we can pass on. The borough received many calls in late summer in regards to drone usage. There are two classifications of drone usage, commercial and hobby, recreational. Commercial does not have to notify the airport. Hobby recreational must notify airport, flight time, location and height. Borough cannot prohibit use, but can object. Delta suggests that if the borough receives a call, the information be relayed to the FBO via telephone. The borough cannot enforce drone regulations. Police should be notified if an issue arises, reports should be made and submitted to the FAA. Whitmer hanger roof status, the maintenance hanger roof has been leaking for some time. Project was put on, put out to bid. The best option is to coat the roof with silicone, which will last approximately 10 years. Given the current budget, the borough will move forward with a silicone coating. Park, that would be our buses. RFP is for design services to, RFP to be issued for graphic design for new logos, skins of buses and exterior advertising in early 2017. New logo may be in place by late April, early May. Bus shelter project redesign underway for a hilltop shelter, it will be enclosed by bollards and curbs and greened with rain guard. Shelter should be installed soon. Promotions, take, take part, give back campaign. Donations being delivered to cluster week of 12/18, that was done of course. Transit driver appreciation day is 3/18/17. And the second annual poster contest launches on March 20th with winners being announced on Earth Day. And that will be all.
Carol, I have a question. When you were back on the commercial, did you say it's the commercial drones don't have to inform the airport or their floor?
Right, they don't, it doesn't, they don't have to notify the airport, probably because they already have, they already know what the limitations are and what is, you know, they can and cannot do. So I would imagine that's why they're not as, you know, prone as, other than residential, you know, and hobbyists.
I guess I'm just concerned, or my inquiry would be about the liability in case of any type of injury, so.
Our, Dave Jones of our airport consultant is on a board that is, this is what they're discussing and they're, and they're, it's constantly changing, you know, all the different rules and regulations. So there's nothing set in, you know, on paper right yet to say what is and isn't, you know, liabilities and things like that. And I'm sure if you would contact, you know, you'd be able to get some listing of what things are, what it is.
Well, you know, anytime you have new technology and the growing amount of litigation that goes on, it just seems like those issues need to be really ironed out.
Well, they do, they do have people and they have boards that are addressing that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Culp, if I may, just so that everybody understands, the borough has absolutely no authority to enforce any rules or regulations regarding drones.
And that's what, yeah, and I had said that.
It is strictly the federal law and FAA.
Yes, the borough cannot enforce any drone regulations.
Correct. Just want to make sure you understand that it's not our rules, so it's not our liability.
Right.
Either, on either account.
I also like to question, it was my understanding that so far as drones, there are restrictions by being within five miles of the airport and also five miles of a nuclear power plant, which happen to overlap here in the borough. Does that prohibit?
They do have the regulations for that, I don't know exactly what they are, you know, as far as that is. You know, I'm sure that if you look into it, you could probably get some of that. But yeah, it's five mi, and, I mean, you can contact the airport and ask for permission, you know, if there's something that you wanted to do, you know, and that type of thing. But yeah, there are a lot of FAA is really working hard on this, because there's a lot of it out there now.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, transportation. D, Ricketts Center, Counselor Kirkland?
We have a meeting forthcoming this month, sometime this month. And at that time, the month after, February, I will have a month's report and a yearly audit.
Very good. Pottstown School Board, Mr. Heidel.
First, I'd like to wish the council a very happy new year. And going forward, at our combined committee of the whole and voting meeting on December 15th, Barth Elementary School Principal Ryan Oxenfurt presented a video on SEL, which is Social and Emotional Learning Program, being piloted at his school this year. Program will help teachers, students and parents learn about how they can control emotions and use a common language to work out relationship issues between these groups. The SEL program will expand in the 2017-2018 school year to include all elementary schools as well as the middle school. Pottstown resident Mr. David Miller spoke to the board about the Save the Lights campaign. He has promised to donate $1,000 to the cause and has challenged businesses in the borough and fellow residents to match his contribution over the next 100 days. Currently, the fundraising total stands at $132,000. The board also passed a resolution that will cap any tax increase for the 2017-2018 budget to the state mandated limit of 3.6%. Please note that this is the maximum increase and nowhere near what the district would expect to raise taxes if taxes are to be raised at all. The board is also working to complete a residency incentive package to offer teachers and administrators in the district. The program would include cooperation with the Federation of Pottstown Education and would consist of a forgivable loan towards the purchase or improvement of a first-time purchase of a home in the district. Also of interest in the district, we'd like to point out the work of Barth Elementary School first grader Ethan Caballero. The seven-year-old student held a toy drive that collected more than 300 toys that were delivered to children at Pottstown Memorial Medical Center for Christmas. Also helped him with the collection and the distribution of toys were our Trojan Man and high school students Anthony Wiggins and Austin Andrews. Also recently, the students of Mr. Andy Bachman's Engineering and Technology class built and tested their own hovercraft. Working craft was made with PCV pipe, leaf blowers, plywood and other common materials. Could a teleportation machine be next? And finally, the next public meeting of the Pottstown School Board will take place on Monday, January 23rd at 7:00 PM in the high school cafeteria. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Harbinger, Counselor Culp. No biggie. Next person, Bill.
No meeting.
Chief from, no, just a couple of things. First off, the speed signs are going up on State Street and we will be planning to give a few warnings out, but then towards spring, we're gonna probably make an all-out enforcement effort on State Street to slow them down to the posted 25 mile an hour. Next thing I want to make council aware of is abandoned vehicles. We also will be marking more abandoned vehicles during spring, I call it the spring cleanup. But also, one of the things I want to make you aware of is when somebody calls in and marks an abandoned vehicle, we don't just run out with a tow truck and tow it away immediately. There's a process that we have to follow that takes approximately one to two weeks and then we schedule it for a solver, we have to use a special tow truck, a company need to be able to dispose of the vehicle, and sometimes it could literally take as much as three weeks to move the vehicle. That causes a lot of angst in residents, it causes you to get a lot of phone calls, we want this vehicle out of here, especially on rainy and snowy days. We're doing our best, we'll move them as we can, and, but we still have to follow the rules and regulations that exist. Thank you.
Emergency Services.
Mayor, my name is Shirley Pierce, President of the Phillies Fire Company. For the last year, we've been talking about how important the volunteer fire company is to the borough financially and safety-wide. I think we need to step it up and work hand-in-hand, government and the fire company, using all our resources. A few weeks ago, Governor Wolf signed a bill, 1683, which enables the borough to give discounts to volunteer firefighters. And if you can check, have your solicitor check into that and see if we can get that in the right direction. Also, first time, or new homeowners in Pottstown, they have something here for volunteer firefighters, for homeowners to buy homes in Pottstown, but it's limited to a few blocks. That needs to be widened to the whole borough. We need firefighters throughout the whole town, not just in a few blocks. The third thing is that I know the borough has grant writers, and we have to ask them to keep one eye open to get every grant that's available for volunteers or non-profit organizations so that we can meet our goals and take care of our prospects and take care of us. With those, if we can get some of that, that can help us with recruitment, retention. So, most of the citizens in the borough of Pottstown feel as the firefighters are paid firefighters, which the drivers are and do a great job, knock down some little fires or something, but the major fires, a driver cannot drive a truck, squirt a hose and rescue people. That's where the volunteers come in. Every year we get less and less, so we do our best to do that. And as we're gonna teach the citizens what it is to be a volunteer firefighter. So we came up with a plan, we want to start Citizens' Fire Academy presented by the Phillies Fire Company. We want to give citizens a chance to come out to one of our trainings. We have a schedule of Saturday starting February 11th, and every other week we will run it. We will come in, we'll introduce them, tell them about the fire company, and we'll talk about the training that they're gonna perform. We'll go up, we'll gear them up like a firefighter, put them on the truck, take them out, show them what the firefighters do. It's like the first one's gonna be hoses, we'll hit hydrants, we'll spray water, we'll charge a pound, we'll wrap everything up, then the citizens can do it. They'll get on the truck and we'll have enough officers and stuff like that to watch them to make sure everything goes right. And then after that, we'll come back, clean up. Mike's Brick Oven Pizza will be donating food for us every week, and we will sit down and have a question and answers with all the citizens, we'll be asking to pass this on to all the people so they get an idea of what it really is and have a little more respect for the volunteer firefighters that are out there. With that program, you got a schedule, we want to put these flowers out, and if you could post it on all your, on all your websites and stuff the borough has, and we have it at the things. There's a lot of other programs that we have at the Phillies, and I just want to have some of these people behind me introduce themselves and what program they're in charge of the Phillies. And if anybody has any interest in getting involved or being involved with any of this stuff in one way or another, you know, just give us a call at the Phillies, we're always there, so.
All right, for yous that don't know me, my name is Joe Graff, I've been the chief at the Phillies for over 25 years. Over that 25 years, I've seen a lot of good things, a lot of changes, volunteers going by the wayside. So we're here to support the borough, Pottstown Fire Department, whatever you need.
Most of you do know me, Miles Feather, I'm the Vice President currently at the Phillies. And in 41 years I've served this borough, I've worked with two, three of the four companies and I've held various positions. Right now, I'm gonna be working with them administratively and also to work with the program at the high school that we're putting together and also with our explorers.
How's it going? My name's Robert Orr, I'm the Assistant Chief of the Phillies Fire Company, also the Training Officer. I'm in charge of recruitment and retention and also run the incentive program. To give you a quick summary on the incentive program, we raised money through fundraisers to provide a dollar per call for each call that our volunteers respond to. Also, we have provided money through fundraisers for food and drinks for everyone's family back at the station while their firefighters are on the trainings and stuff like that. You could find more information at our website at philliesfirecompany.org. And thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Ashley Wright-Nauer, I'm Secretary and firefighter at the Phillies Fire Company for about two years now, and I help with female recruitment and retention as well.
Hey, doing, I'm Rob Andrew, I've been a member of the Phillies going on, I guess it's 16 years. So when I joined, I was part of a mentor program, we recently brought that back. And basically what that does is allow the explorer and junior firefighters to work a little closer with some of the senior members who they feel more of a connection with. It makes them feel more comfortable, kinda does away with a whole classroom setting, but they can have geared more one-on-one with the individuals that they feel comfortable working with and, you know, as well as with the group. So, thank you.
My name's Brian Kish, I have over 25 years with the Phillies. I started as a junior and I plan on being there until I retire, and I'm in charge of the Explorer Division. So the 14 to 21-year-old children that come in, we bring them in and get them on their different levels, pair them off, and we train them. And that explorer, turned out some chiefs, paid firefighters, drivers that are in the borough today, so it's a really good program. Thank you.
Mr. Pierce, if I could ask you, how many junior firefighters do you have? I know that during the recent 9/11 services, I noticed that there were quite a few junior firefighters at one of the events, and it was very impressive, and thank you for the brief meet and greet that you just provided us with. But how many?
We have, I think it's two juniors, and then the rest are explorers. So we'll have six explorers and two juniors at this time.
Thank you.
I think as the word gets out, we'll get more and more. We have did some renovations to our base to make it a training center so that, and we have fire TV, so we can go 24 hours of training on that, so.
Thank you.
If anybody needs to get that, we're gonna have these things called to stations and we'll put this out on our website if anybody's interested. I hope all the councilors sign up for one of these, for one of these trainings and you can see what it, we have to go through as a firefighter.
Charlie, could you send that to us electronically too?
Yep.
And Charlie, we can sign up for all the trainings, right?
Yes. Yep. You can sign up for one or all four, this is where we're gonna start and we're gonna go from there, so.
Is there an upper age limit for juniors?
No, we can, we can, what it, people, any citizen wants to come at any age, and they can come in and they can be involved as much as they want or as little as they want.
Great. Thank you all. Okay, Mayor Thomas, how about a report?
Just to segue with the fire company and thank all of the firefighters for their work in a recent fire that took the life of one of our citizens of the borough in the 400 block of High Street just before Christmas. And I'd just like to thank all of you for your efforts in avoiding any other calamities or catastrophes at that site. And I was able to get a message through a third party for the victim to be able to share on behalf of the borough for our feelings of their loss and to extend sympathies. While we're also extending sympathies, I'd like to inform you that our most recent staff of the Human Relations Commission, Mrs. Diana Rivera O'Brien has passed away, and we would just like you to keep her family members in your thoughts and prayers, and we'd also like to thank her for her efforts in keeping activities afloat behind the scenes, even so, on behalf of the Human Relations Commission. I'd also like to announce that on Sunday, January 15th at 4:00 PM, Bethel Community Church will be hosting the Community Martin Luther King Celebration. And, you know, Reverend Ross has been the organizer of this with several others, and their goal is really to get back up to having about 30 churches represented at one time. There were 30 churches actively represented in this unifying community event, so consider that for your calendars on January 15th, that's a Sunday at 4:00 PM. Thank you.
Senator Hughes, report.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. At last month's meeting, you passed a budget which resulted in our putting the hiring of a police officer on hold. Since then, after lengthy discussion with Chief Drumheller, it was decided that we're gonna delay the new vehicle acquisition and revisit that topic at mid-year. Taking that decision and coupling it with the fact that the police academy fees will be reimbursed by the state, we're able to keep the PD staffing and its current allocation of 47 officers for 2017. Realizing, of course, that this is gonna cause the police department's fleet management rotation to be negatively impacted, but we agree that the need for the officers certainly outweighs the need for, or the problems that are gonna be created by the decision. I want to remind everybody that this Friday, January the 6th, will be Steve Banford's last day with paid, interim director, executive director Peggy Lee Clark has been working with Steve over the past few weeks to get up to speed. My message is that Peggy will ensure that a positive momentum continues with paid, and the executive committee will begin the search process very shortly, and I'll keep you up to speed as we move through that process. This Saturday, as sort of an advertisement, Arc Fusion 19464 will be hosting the Pottstown Arts Walk, two different times, from 2:00 to 4:00 for family-friendly activities, and again from 4:00 to 8:00 for activities that are more designed for adults. If you're interested, be sure to pre-register at their Arc Fusion's website. And last but not least, as a reminder, Monday, January 16th, an observance of the birthday of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Borough Hall and all other government institutions, local, county, federal and state, will be closed.
Very good. Thank you. It's at this time, we're gonna have a presentation, the promotion of Officer Todd Istiniz to rank of corporal in the Pottstown Police Department. I think it's at this time we would entertain public comment.
I'd like to make a public comment in general as representing political subdivision oversight of the police department. And not only as we are heralding one promotion tonight for Todd Istiniz and his family as well to the position of corporal, we'd just like to say that this is, this is a boots-on-the-ground type of job. It's not a job where there's always comfort, but from my perspective, I will tell you that there's always prayer. That as your loved one goes out to serve our community, that in our hearts, that as they serve, that they return to you whole and well. And we thank you for your contribution in sharing all of the officers with us for their duties as we make this promotion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, it is time now that council takes action on this. Okay, it is time for council to take action, and I'm seeking a motion to approve this promotion to Todd Istiniz to the rank of corporal. Move?
Second.
And seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, promotion goes. Would you come up, please?
When you're getting promoted, that's always the scary part. Thank you, relax Todd, I promise. Stand right here, please. When you're the chief of police, you're afforded a luxury of watching your officers grow up. I know I'm the old dog in the fleet and I'm probably gonna go out the door soon, but I've watched Todd's career from the very beginning. I've watched him with his dreams and his desires, his goals, and his endless work relationship is meticulous and well-defined. Todd, I'm very proud of you, I'm glad that you're getting promoted, and today is the first day you step into that command staff, and I have to tell you, your role will change. There will be those who will respect you, there'll be those who put themselves out, there'll be those who test you. Do well, do like you just did through your whole career, maintain what you're doing, and you will do a fine job for the Pottstown Police Department. Mayor?
We're just talking about history, 2005, when he was sworn in, I would say, as well. To all who shall see these presents, greetings, know ye that reposing special trust and confidence in the fidelity and abilities of Todd M. Istiniz, we do appoint him a corporal in the Pottstown Police Department to the rank as such from the fourth day of January 2017. This appointee will therefore carefully and diligently discharge the duties of the grade to which appointed by doing and performing all manner of things therein pertaining. And we do strictly charge and require all persons of lesser grade to render obedience to appropriate orders. And this appointee is to observe and follow such orders and directions as may be given from time to time by superiors acting according to the rules and regulations governing the discipline of the Pottstown Police Department, given under our hand and the seal of the corporation at headquarters, Pottstown Police Department, on this day, the 4th of January of 2017, in the year of our Lord. Thank you.
Next, Opevius. His wife will step forward, pin on his badge. Mandy?
He's got his vest on.
Let's take it.
Put it up. That's right.
Thank you. Exciting day for the Police Department, doesn't it? One of the things I share with you is there's times in your career which you will remember for the rest of your life. The time you got hired, the time you leave the Police Department, the time you get promoted, and the time you save someone's life. That's a time where it's very special in police work. And tonight, I'd like to call forward two officers, Officer Zach Robinson and Corporal Steve Marcy. Would you step forward, please? Tonight, they're being honored for lifesaving work. And forever, their uniform is going to be adorned with a badge now that says they saved a life. In Corporal Marcy's case, his bar is going to have a star in the middle of it because he's done this once before. So, Mayor, would you please read the...
This lifesaving award is presented to Corporal Steve Marcy and Officer Zachary Robinson. On November 12th, 2016, at approximately 12:11 hours, Pottstown officers were dispatched to 331 North Hanover Street, Apartment 39, for an unconscious subject by the name of George Weller. Upon arrival, Officer Zachary Robinson observed Weller lying down partially inside the doorway of the residence. Officer Robinson rolled Weller over and saw that he was blue in color, not breathing, and did not have a pulse. Officer Robinson immediately started to give Weller oxygen and began chest compressions. He had to stand over the subject, straddling him while continuing with compressions and providing oxygen. Seeing that Officer Robinson was tiring from the efforts, Corporal Steve Marcy stepped in to relieve him. Corporal Marcy continued to administer chest compressions until additional EMS personnel arrived and were able to relieve him. EMS personnel later advised officers that Weller had regained a pulse. The actions of Corporal Steve Marcy bring honor to himself, the Pottstown Police Department, and the community in which he serves. And a witnesses today, we have affixed our signatures on this 7th day of December, 2016. And thank you for your lifesaving efforts.
Next is Item 8, a presentation on land banking by Winifred Branton. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, and thanks for having me here tonight to talk with you about land banking. I have had this conversation with some of you previously. So, I'm going to do an overview of land banking in Pennsylvania today and hit some of the highlights. And then, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about land banking. I hope that serves your purpose tonight. In many communities in Pennsylvania, there are vacant and abandoned properties. And this slide talks about some of the reasons why and some of the barriers for moving those properties back into productive use. Many of you are familiar with the economic crisis of 2008, the housing and mortgage crisis that left many properties abandoned and in tax delinquency. Other problems that contribute to blighted properties are real estate speculation and then just an overabundance of housing and population loss. So, when you talk about blighted properties, it's good to start by looking at what the problem is and seeing what strategies are out there that can help to address some of these problems. Another problem is that for municipalities, particularly local governments like Pottstown, you are left with costs that are related to blighted properties. And some of those costs are direct, there's indirect costs, and then there's the loss of wealth that's associated with your own home. If you live in proximity to blighted properties or in neighborhoods where there's a number of blighted properties, that has a deleterious effect on your property values and reduces those, and therefore you lose wealth. It also contributes to lost tax revenues because as your property values are reduced, your assessments and property taxes that can be collected are also reduced. The two studies up there give some clear examples of what the size of that loss is. It's significant. It costs taxpayers and residents a significant amount of money each year to deal with blighted properties. But when you think about vacant properties, it's best to think of them as both representing blight and opportunity. Here in Pottstown, looking at the 2010 census, there were approximately 10% of the housing units were vacant. There's 60 properties certified as blighted by your Blighted Property Review Committee as of November 1. And then, there are 14 parcels on the Montgomery County Tax Claim Bureau repository list that are in Pottstown that are all sitting and not being used to their fullest potential. So, that's where the opportunity comes in. The opportunity to look at those vacant properties, the tax delinquent properties, and see if there's a way to move those from vacancy and abandonment to a productive use such as new housing, parks, green spaces, places for businesses to expand. So, in looking back over the strategies that are available to Pennsylvania local governments, one of those strategies is a land bank. And the land bank legislation was passed by the state legislature in 2012. And it gives local governments, counties, and municipalities with populations greater than 10,000 the opportunity to create a land bank, which is geared and designed to create a system for moving those properties back into productive use in a manner that can be faster, cheaper, and more efficient. So, when you think about a land bank, it's good to think of it as a blight remediation tool as opposed to a new government agency. Although it is a governmental entity, it's got a single purpose. And that purpose is to convert these vacant, abandoned, tax-delinquent properties back to productive use. And the legislation that was passed is very flexible, it's optional. It doesn't require communities to create land banks. It leaves that decision to local governments to see if it works for their community to help them return these properties to productive use. A land bank's activities or what a land bank does, the whole focus of a land bank is to act as a facilitator for acquiring and then disposing of or transferring properties to new owners who are able to renovate the property or demolish the property and bring it back to some kind of use that is of value to the community. And a key part of the legislation also was that when a land bank is looking at uses, that those uses be consistent with already-created plans that might be in effect, your comprehensive plan, or if you have an economic development plan. You'd want to make sure that the land bank was acting in concert and in being consistent with those plans that have already been reviewed and prepared. This graphic gives like a picture idea of how a land bank works. Two big barriers to returning these properties to productive use are title issues and tax delinquency. And what a land bank's able to do is clear the title and extinguish liens, not working by itself, but in concert with the taxing authorities, the local government, the county government, and your school district. The land bank, to be effective, has to work in partnership with those taxing authorities in order to do the kind of work it's designed to do to move these properties out of blighted and abandoned condition and into productive use again. A land bank is created by a local government ordinance. And the ordinance can set forth the priorities for land acquisition and disposition that is consistent with what the elected officials and residents of the local government desire. The land bank is governed by a Board of Directors. The Board of Directors would be identified and included, at least the interim ones, in your ordinance. And then, the ordinance would set the terms and qualifications for board members going forward. And it has to be an odd number between 5 and 11. A land bank can be administered by an existing governmental entity like a redevelopment authority or a Department of Community Development within a government. It can also be administered by a nonprofit entity or a private sector provider. And that is all allowed under the enabling legislation. A key part of the land bank legislation was to make sure that these new entities were transparent and accessible to the public. And part of that goes to the fact that the legislature clearly states that the Board and its...and the land bank and its staff are all subject to all sunshine and ethics laws like other governmental entities in Pennsylvania. The land bank is given a number of powers under the enabling legislation. And then, there's the catch-all that says all powers necessary are appropriate. The key powers that I just want to hit on are acquire, manage, hold, and dispose of property. That's really like acting as a real estate entity where you are facilitating the acquisition and then transfer of properties to new owners. The second is, again, discharging the liens, which is critical to clearing the title and making that property of value and of interest to private investors. And then, last is quieting title. If there are still remaining title issues, the land bank's given powers to go to court through an action called a quiet title action and ask the court to assist in ordering that you now have full and clear title to the property and no one else does. That assists purchasers with getting title insurance and financing for any rehab or acquisition of the property that they would be pursuing. Very important, land banks do not have eminent domain power. That's clearly stated, expressly stated in the enabling legislation. And finally, the land bank, again, has to collaborate with the taxing authorities. Can't act on its own. One of the key powers of a land bank that made it...that has made it attractive to the communities that have created land banks in Pennsylvania is a special power for land banks to acquire properties at judicial tax sales. This power allows a land bank to negotiate with the County Tax Claim Bureau for certain properties that would be on the judicial tax sale list. And rather than have to bid at a public auction against other bidders, the land bank can negotiate with the County Tax Claim Bureau to purchase that property. And this gives local governments an opportunity to not have to bid against others for a key parcel that might be necessary for different projects or developments that you have as priorities for your community. Another thing to emphasize here is that the statute requires and the Constitution itself requires that notice be sufficient and extensive when you're pursuing this kind of a remedy. So, it's not a power that can be exercised without the land bank notifying and participating through the judicial sale process and working with the County Tax Claim Bureau to ensure that everyone's aware that the land bank is going to be acquiring these certain properties. Communities that have exercised this power, there may be 200 properties up for tax sale and maybe they'll take three of them. It's not a land bank going in and taking all of the tax sale properties. It's just looking at what's available, targeting your acquisitions so that they make sense for what your goals are, and using that power to accomplish those goals. I've been talking a lot today, so I apologize. Here is just a list showing all of the land banks that have been established to date in Pennsylvania. And as you can see, there are a number that are cities as well as county-based land banks. The legislation authorizes either. And there are a couple that are multi-municipal, where there are groups of municipalities that join together to form a land bank. I have a couple examples here just to show you a land bank in action. In Schuylkill County, there's a multi-municipal land bank. And what they've done is they recently received a donation of this property and a $10,000 check from Wells Fargo to be put towards rehabbing the property. They're going to put another $10,000 into the property and then make that property available to a new homeowner. Another example is in Westmoreland County, their land bank, they're partnering with Habitat for Humanity, a local foundation, to rehab two abandoned properties and make those available for homeowners through Habitat's homeownership program. The biggest question that I've heard across the Commonwealth over the last two years is how can we pay for our land bank? And there are a number of resources, both public and private, that are being used to fund land banks. Some of them are state grants, which primarily Keystone Communities is a big one of those. Act 137, Housing Trust Fund Grants from Counties are also being used. And then, proceeds from sales and leases of property, but that would be down the road a little bit once the land bank was actually having an inventory and transacting business. If there were proceeds from those sales, the land bank keeps those proceeds and can use it for its operation. The last point is, in the waning days of last year, Governor Wolf signed Act 152, which authorizes counties to add $15 to the deed and mortgage recording fees. And that money is set aside for demolition funding. And a number of counties have already started to pursue that. I'm not certain if Montgomery County has, but it's certainly an option that you'd want to explore to see if there might be additional monies for demolition. Because that really is a big problem. Everywhere I go to, people say, "We need more money for demo, there's not enough CDVG." Just isn't giving us what we need to address these older properties. So, in conclusion, here are just some of the takeaways. One is that this create...land banks have powers that create new opportunities to deal with blighted properties and repurpose those for uses that a community is interested in pursuing. The pursuit of these blighted properties should be targeted. A land bank shouldn't take every blighted property because there's not always going to be a use for those properties and you have limited resources. The partnership is critical. The taxing authorities have to be consulted and you have to work with those to exercise the powers that are given to land banks. And just finally, that a land bank can't solve all the blighted property problems that you may have, but it's one additional tool that goes along with code enforcement, conservatorship, and other strategies that the legislature has provided through a number of statutes in Pennsylvania. So, that really brings me to...yeah, there's also a Pennsylvania Land Bank Resource Guide. A number of you, I know I have shared it with. I had the opportunity to write it for the Housing Alliance. It was published in May. It included some additional case studies and some more details about what a land bank looks like and how it operates. So, that's a good resource. And you can see that on the pablightlibrary.com site. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have tonight as well.
One of the things that's very important to Borough Pottstown is home ownership. And I just want to ensure through the land banking that these can be deed-restricted properties so that anytime, even if a property is paid off, if that person wants to resell that property, that that restriction of that deed goes with the property as a home ownership, that they cannot turn it around as a rental property.
That would have to be included in your ordinance and in the policies and procedures of the land bank. There are certainly ways that you can restrict, especially if you sell the property for less than... than what the market value is, or you sell it under certain conditions. You can include restrictions in that deed so that if they go to sell it in the future, that there's some kind of return to the land bank for what it gave up in that transaction. Is that what you're going for, or you just want to?
No, because that just sounds like we can recoup some money. What I'm trying to prevent is, at any time in the future, that property becoming a rental as opposed to an owner-occupied property.
You would want to include, make the land bank be responsible for ensuring that properties that it acquires and transfers are only occupied by homeowners. There are ways that you can do that. I know that there are a lot of legal issues that would have to be addressed in figuring out the best way to do that. I know that there are land banks that are focusing on home ownership and doing it by acquiring properties and then making those first available for transfer to homeowners, people who commit to stay in the property for X number of years. In terms of, you know, preventing it from ever being a rental property, that's, I have not heard of any communities that are doing land banks that have gone down that path, but I certainly would think that it would be something that could be explored. I just don't have the answer whether or not legally all of those conditions could be applied to that one property that a land bank was transferring out.
But you had mentioned, and I love Habitat Humanities Program because they actually hold the deed for 30 years. And then they also have a very extensive participation program for the homeowners to qualify to be in one of those properties. But it can be, you can have several nonprofits, for-profits, developers, all participating within the land banking process, and as long as all those developers meet the requirements that the land bank sets for within. So they're working within their criteria of each organization, and then under the bigger umbrella of the land bank criteria.
First, I know for Habitat and for others, I understand what you're talking about in terms of the restrictions they put on, because they require certain things from their participants. And certainly, the land bank could work in partnership with any number of nonprofit organizations like Habitat and can pre-qualify those developers. So for instance, suppose there was a property that was on the repository list in Pottstown, and Habitat or another nonprofit was interested in getting that property and rehabbing it for a new homeowner. The land bank could be the real estate transaction facilitator, acquire the property, and already have pre-qualified Habitat based on standards that will be part of the land bank's policies and procedures, and then the property could be transferred from the land bank to Habitat, and then it goes from Habitat to the homeowner that they've already designated as the recipient. I mean, that's the way, I know some communities are looking at it, to have a list of pre-qualified developers, both nonprofit and for-profit, and then if they're interested in a property, the land bank would seek to acquire it and transfer it, and then they would be able to transfer it further out to the new homeowner.
So again, then, within the land bank criteria, we can set some standards that might not exist for like a private developer that we want to see in order, just like Habitat's program, that they put them through a lot of educational process and home buyers and community stuff, and to make sure that the buyer themselves were participating in that.
You certainly would be able to do that if you were selling directly to the buyer. If you're looking for an individual buyer, like somebody who says, "I want that property. Can I acquire it from the land bank?" You can certainly have qualifications for who's going to buy from you. And part of the qualification process in other jurisdictions is, do they have the capacity to rehabilitate the property? It doesn't really relate to whether or not they're going to own it or rent it, but you can set standards to pre-qualify buyers from the land bank. I'm not certain if you could set those qualifications to mandate that it could never become a rental property, but you certainly could figure out, I think, and I'm looking at your solicitor, there are legal conditions that would have to be met in order to satisfy that, because like any other governmental entity, a land bank is a governmental entity and has to follow certain rules, but it's not subject to the same rules as maybe to Burrow-Pottstown is. And you can sell a property for less than market value. Most local governments are restricted. They have to sell it to the highest bidder. They have to get the best deal they can. But if you're going to transfer properties for less than the market value or at a reduced amount, you're able to negotiate what those conditions are and what the conditions of sale would be, and that's how other communities are doing it. They're using that process, the disposition policy, to talk about what the priorities are, like what are the priorities for the land bank in disposing of property? Do we want to encourage home ownership? Do we want to promote market rate development? Do we want to expand commercial business in certain areas of the town? And that's how they direct the land bank to proceed in their disposition activities. Did I address all your questions there?
You did. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I was curious about properties that have liens on them, like say, there's like a second mortgage on the home. That's also taken care of by the land bank? How do they work that?
If it's a private lien, by the time it gets to a judicial tax sale, which is the special power, those private liens are being cleared, because the first, the private liens are still on board when you get to the upset sale, but when a court orders that a judicial sale can take place, the court order says that the properties are transferred free and clear of all liens, which would include mortgages. But when I say all liens, if there's an IRS lien, or there's a certain subset of liens that aren't cleared through that process that you have to negotiate, but a private mortgage, that would be cleared by the time the property's transferred out at judicial sale.
And the bank or whoever has the mortgage, they have to like just clear that? They can't, they have to?
Yeah, it's cleared by court order, and then the deed that's issued from the, oh my gosh, the tax claim bureau would recognize that those liens have been extinguished. And I mean, that's the whole purpose of going through the tax sale process, to get a court order that allows these properties to be moved back into productive use, because the longer they sit with those tax delinquencies on them, the local governments and the school district have no resources coming from that property.
And also, you know, except sometimes they have to take, go into court and go through a court process to clear these homes, does that often take like a long time sometimes? Or is that, or, you know, does that go pretty quickly?
The statute has an expedited hearing and decision process for land banks if they come in, but a land bank would only be seeking to quiet title if there were questions about clouds that were still on the title once the land bank took the property. Typically, I've talked to some courts across Pennsylvania to see if the schedule that the land bank statute provides is efficient, and I think it's 30 and then 60 or 90, but there's a shortened expedited period for that. And, you know, they've told me that that would work well for them, that it's not a long process. It's just the service of notice. Again, if you're quieting title, the whole idea is that that petition, which is filed in the Court of Common Pleas, has to be served on everybody who's still in the chain of title. So finding those people and getting service, or getting alternative service if you can't find them, can delay the process, but here, the court said, you know, serve the process, serve the complaint, and then we'll have an expedited hearing in order to quiet the title and allow the property to be transferred out.
I had a question regarding water. Water is the only utility that can impose a lien, so that would mean that the municipality would be losing money in those extinguishments.
Yes, and that's why the land bank has to negotiate with the, and get the approval of the taxing authorities and the utilities in order to remove any liens that are, extinguish any liens that are on the property. And ordinarily, when you're trying to talk about an individual property, a lot of times a land bank or somebody who's looking to form a land bank will show you the property now and how much taxes have been collected over the last five years, and you'll see that oftentimes, even three years, it's zero, and that there's hundreds of dollars worth of utility bills sitting there that aren't going to ever be paid, because now the liens on the property are greater than the value of the property, so nobody's ever going to buy that property. So there has to be a mechanism to extinguish those liens, clear the title, and move it to a new user, and you just have to balance what you're going to get in the longer term versus a loss of some short-term dollars. Thank you.
Hey, what else?
I try to shorten it. As the night gets longer, it's like, you know, I've done this before, and people have questions, get to the questions, it's usually more helpful.
Yeah, I think it's, especially many properties are more, they need to be made more powerful.
And there are really good examples now, as the statute's been in place for a while, to look at. Westmoreland County Land Bank is one of them, and Vanango County is a good one, too. Philadelphia has a, you know, a good strategic plan in place, and they're working on it. So there's a lot of examples that you can follow to show how it's really working well.
Yeah, and what's really great about it is, I mean, oftentimes, properties go for judicial sale at much lower of a value than they're worth, so if we can get those properties out from underneath an investor that might not be doing with them what we would like to see as a community, I think that's a very positive thing.
Any other questions? Okay, I will ask that this be put on as a motion for Monday evening so we can take action and begin this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, I think I've heard this six times, but one of these times I'll understand it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, number nine, from the Pottstown Farm, Sheila Dugan.
Just briefly, there are three committee members behind me, Patty and Debbie and Carolyn, who are staying away from me, so they are here in support of this. We just wanted to present to you guys what has happened in our inaugural year for the farmer's market and make a request to make some changes for this year coming forward. The mission has stayed the same. We are looking to create a hub in the downtown for people to come and visit and provide healthy choices and educational opportunities for everyone for healthy living. So in the feedback, we had a couple of meetings, and throughout the market, we would talk and talk to businesses and vendors and the people there. So some of the feedback was that four to 8:00 PM might be too long. The placement of the market, which is what we are requesting to adjust. A lot of people were requesting the SNAP eligibility, less artisans and more produce, focus on entertainment. When we first got together, there were a whole lot of ideas that we tried to implement and found that that's really hard to do, so we are cutting back a little bit and refocusing. Most businesses had positive feedback. We saw a dramatic increase in their businesses. There were two discouraged businesses. After discussing with the committee, you know, if we could please 100% of the people 100% of the time, we'd be miracle workers, so the overall positive attitude for moving forward with the market was stronger than the one or two people that complained. So we took their complaints into consideration as we move forward for next year as well. We also found that volunteers need to be better trained and understand the market needs. We definitely fell short on that. So changes for 2017 season. We are looking to open June 1st and run through Thanksgiving week. This will allow for more produce to be produced. Our farmers' market pride itself on being mostly self-produced, so those farmers found that they had very little things that are available at the beginning of May, June, or April and May, so we pushed it back to June. The reason staying through Thanksgiving is we had a lot of vendors this year that were sad to see it end in October, so we plan on having a lot more orchards and things involved that we'll start to see that at the end of the season come in. The market will remain on Thursday night, but run from 5:00 to 7:30 PM. This, too, was suggested from past seasons. What we would like to do is change to the south side of sidewalk on High Street. The sidewalk has been measured. There's plenty of room with the vendors against the buildings for handicapped and strollers. It will also allow for the vendors to be closer to each other to make for a better market feel. When they were on the north side, in the parking area, trash cans got in the way and things that ended up not working as well for the overall feel. On the sidewalk, yes. Next to the building, up against the building, yes. Flaggers were very costly, and there really aren't people who were set up to do what we needed them to do, so they were very costly and poorly run. So we'd like to eliminate that, which we can easily do if we go to the sidewalk. On the north side, there's more parking available because of the angled parking, even though people don't love it. It does allow for more parking. What I'd like to do, if we get approved to move to that side, is with the police help, we will work on parking on the south side for vendors to pull in, unload, go park into the parking lots that are available, and then leaving that area open so that we can, throughout the area, put banners for our sponsorships to allow better sponsorship visibility, and also to allow people that are driving up and down the street to see the vendors and things that are going on with the activity. It's also much more shaded on the south side than it was, and when it was 110 degrees out there, it was very warm, so the vendors, when we discussed with them possibly moving over, that was the first thing they said, was there's shade over there, so I think it'll be very successful. New to the Pottstown Farm, we've been approved for the SNAP program, and through our grant, we plan to facilitate about 600 customers with SNAP incentives. So the way that will work is somebody comes, they use their SNAP card, their access card, they put $10, $15, whatever on it. We have $5 market coins that we can allow for each time they use that access card. So if they spend $20, they will actually be able to purchase $25 in healthy produce. We figure about 600 customers should be able to facilitate that over the course of the season. We also have the POP program, which is the Power of Produce. This is for any child under the age of 12. They try a new product at the market, whatever the vegetable or fruit or whatever of the week is, and they will also receive a $5 coin to go and shop the market. This is a very successful program in other markets. Children become very involved in picking out their own produce, so it's kind of exciting to have both of those incentives in place for this year coming. The calendar for organization is not yet completed, but will include more meetings for the vendors and volunteer and staff, a scheduled marketing plan, social media and website changes. Vendor applications are already being sent out. We're looking into the grant for the POP program. Even though we have gotten the grant from Health and Wellness, we want to add to that so we can allow more children to enjoy it, and we'll have training for the SNAP program and that incentive. We've already received the $15,000, which is an additional $5,000 from last year from Health and Wellness. We're very appreciative of it. It will go into more marketing signage. We will also have paid staff who will be paid a stipend every Thursday. There are a few sponsorships that we're looking for that we will need people to be guaranteed that they're there, and the way to do that is not through volunteers, although we love volunteers. When it's 110 out, they tend to not want to be quite as excited, so our grant will allow us to pay a stipend to three staff to be there with, alone with me as the market director. We have the SNAP incentives, we have the POP incentive, and training programs through the Farmers Market Coalition, of which the director and the committee members that are available can go through, that will help us continue to grow the market. High Street's the perfect fit in 2017. At our inaugural year of the market, every Thursday night became a night of increased visitors, more open businesses, and an overall excitement in Pottstown. Restaurants extended their hours, businesses remained open, and the start of some nightlife activity began. Six businesses that were minimally involved in the past became believers in the farm. They remained open for much of the market hours, and they had positive feedback at the end of the season. A few other businesses are looking to find ways to better engage with the market and marketgoers and promote their businesses. So part of our mission on doing it on Thursday night was exactly what we accomplished with several of those businesses. Two vendors at the market had piqued interest in possibly moving their business to Pottstown because of their positive experience here. It did not come to fruition really under, not because of anyone's, anyone doing anything wrong, it just didn't work out, but it just shows us that people are starting to look at Pottstown in positive light. We also have two artisans who started the market as a hobby, and they have flourished in the past. have flourished into starting small businesses. And that all started from the farmers' market. Three Rosebud Floral is one of those, and said the most important thing about the Pottstown Farm was building connections. It's even more important than making a sale. It's not always been a busy summer for the market, the heat, the humidity, but even if sales were sometimes slow, the connections they've made with other vendors, with customers, and the people running the market were invaluable. And we had a lot of feedback very similar to that. So our request is that we move it to the south side this year, and we'll begin in June and run through the week of Thanksgiving.
Okay. Have you had conversations with the store owners on the south side? You know, what kind of impact you'll have with them? Are they in favor of your change?
Everyone that we've spoken to is really excited about it. They, they weren't really partial to whether it was the south side or the north side so much as just being in downtown.
Are the store owners on the north side jealous that might, they might not get the foot traffic?
Again, nobody really seemed to mind one side or the other. You know, the two businesses that weren't thrilled with us to begin with aren't going to be thrilled with us no matter what we do. So I could, you know, bring God into the market, and it wouldn't matter.
Okay.
You know, it, it just seemed more of a focus of bringing it into the downtown.
All right, just so you have the support of the people you'll be in front of.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I have not, we haven't had anyone that we've spoken to, and I've spoken to a lot of them. There are a couple of people that, through communication, you don't get a lot of communication with them, and, you know, aren't real sure exactly what all goes on downtown, but typically, once we find them and discuss with them, they don't have any issues. We've managed, working with a couple of the buildings that had deliveries and things being going on, that we've needed to arrange for that. And that's another thing that we'll be doing this year too, early on, is letting people know that if there are, you know, areas that they are concerned about, such as a delivery on a particular Thursday or whatever, that we'll work that out in time with the police, so it can be done.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. We'll ask staff to look into this, see what needs to be changed.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think, yes. Master Traffic Ordinance Amendment. Your turn, Mr. Garner.
Yes, the council recalls, last month, we discussed the fact that at Security Plaza, there was going to be a need for an agreement to allow for police parking exclusively for purposes of the new district justice offices that are being relocated. And in conjunction with that agreement, we'll need to amend the traffic ordinance so we can provide the parking restrictions for the police vehicles. So we would just ask for permission to prepare and advertise that ordinance, so it's ready in February.
Very good. We'll list that for Monday. PDITDA, Ordinance Amendment. And the document has been sent to you.
So I believe Sheila, if you can help me with this, if I'm not mistaken, you would like to reduce the number of board members. You're currently at nine.
Yes.
And would like to have a reduction to seven, so that you're able to have a quorum.
Yes.
Yeah, the present ordinance that the council adopted probably in the late 80s had nine members of the PDITDA board. Like any other board or commission, I think you've been through this before, you have the right through ordinance to change the, the numbers of members of PDITDA, the authority. That would require an ordinance amendment in order to do that. And obviously, when you're doing that, you can't eliminate anybody's term or anybody's position, but I understand that there are some vacancies there now. Is that correct?
We have three current vacancies. If we go down to seven, one of those vacancies resigned, so that's really a non-issue. And the other two would like to renew, so.
So if council's inclined, I guess the motion for Monday would be to authorize the advertising, to amend the PDITDA ordinance to reduce the size of the PDITDA board from nine to seven.
Very good. Okay, we'll list that for Monday. Well, the fire service agreement amendments for our four volunteer fire companies.
So if you recall, last month, directed us or gave us permission to begin the process of modifying the fire services agreements to reflect the recent changes that were made in the fire ordinance. Mr. Garner has prepared them, and the drafts are...
We've received them.
...reviewed. Yeah, as we, as we talked about, the genesis or the impetus to change was the recent ordinance changes. I think if you look through and, and look at the changes, really, it's, it's the flipping of the requirement that the chief now has the authority and the recommendation comes from the fire committee before, I think it was reversed. I believe we also had incorporated the language as far as the information that should be provided to the borough. That had been done through an amendment to the agreement some time ago, but just highlighted the change that's formally in the document now. And really, those, those are the key changes from, from my standpoint. It wasn't, wasn't anything that was overly complicated. It was just really to clean them up and make sure they were consistent with our ordinance. And I think they hadn't really been overhauled in totality, probably since 2005 or 2006. So it was a good exercise just to make sure the language in the agreement was consistent with our practice with the four companies. And we would need your permission to provide them to the companies, so we could get the companies to approve them and return them to the borough.
Okay, any concerns or discussion on this? Otherwise, we'll list it for Monday to go forward. Okay, 13 is the sale of borough vehicles. I think it's been posted on our website.
That's correct. It's posted, I believe, on PennBid, and the bids are believed to be open on January 6th. Doug, is that correct? Municipal, thank you. And scheduled to be open on January 6th, so you'll have the information for Monday evening.
Very good.
And thank you for listing the actual website to go to on the borough webpage, so that people in the community can have the opportunity to bid on them, which is www.municipid.com.
14 is zoning issue. Pottstown Area Senior Center at 2288 Moser Road.
We, we received, or the zoning hearing board has received an application from what used to be the senior center, now as I guess the active adult community. And the property is at the Moser Road location. The, the variances they are seeking, I understand that are two. One is they wish to rent a portion of the property to a church, and a church is not a permitted use in that district, so they would need a variance if the church were to lease space. And I believe they're asking for some additional signage that is in excess of what the ordinance permits. So it would be those two variances is what they're seeking. And typically, we look to the board counselor to see if there's any issue.
B, Mrs. Perez, that's your ward?
I have to read a little more, because I don't agree to this supposed to be the senior center and the church in there.
Okay. Would you like more time, you'd like more time to review it?
I would say review, but I, I will manually change my line again.
Is that building currently a taxable property? Because I, I have some concerns about that as well.
I don't believe it is a taxable property. I think it's off the tax rolls. Clearly, depending upon the, the type of tenant, it could come back on the tax roll as a portion. But I'm, I'm reasonably certain they have received exempt status based on the senior center.
Would you agree to table it for a month, and we'll all look at it? Very good. Of this month? Okay. And let's re, take a hard look over the weekend, and then we'll discuss and maybe take action Monday night. Okay? Okay, we can't wait a month, but, thank you. 15, board appointments. Blighted Property Review Committee, four vacant terms. I would expect they all want, have you heard? They all want to be reappointed. Okay. Keep the same. Okay. Herb has one vacancy, and we received a resume from a L. Justin Niata.
Laura.
Justin Niata. Okay, anyone else?
Is Laura's not here?
I can do chemicals, no names. Okay, on Human Relations Commission, there's three vacant terms, and we have a writing from a Robert Watson. Any others? Pottstown Borough Authority, there's one expiration, and we have requests from the current Jeff Chumnuck, and also from our Vice President Cheryl Miller. Any others to be added to this? All right, we'll list that for Monday. PDITDA, three terms expire, and we have applications from Amy Rosman, Joe Cabalo, and Nicole Taylor. Any others?
Nicole's presentation.
Nicole is resigning.
Okay.
And Amy and Joe were just recently joined the board, and this is just that, that's her reappointment.
Yes, they knew that their appointment would come up.
Okay, now, for clarification, we're going to reduce your board size by two members, and will you still have room for these two?
Yes, because Cindy Brower, her term was up in January.
Okay, just, just wanted to clarify that, and we'll list that for Monday. Vacancy board, we have one term and one after, as far as I know. Sorry. We'll list that. Zoning Hearing Board, one term expires, and we've received an application from Mr. Patrizi. Any others?
Who's already serving on the board.
Yes.
Is there a way, I mean, it's, it's very disappointing that we only get one or two, and usually the same people for board appointments over and over, to encourage more people in the community, I don't know, get the word out there, spread it further, that we have these appointments available, other than just sitting here at Borough Council meeting saying, hey, we have the appointments available, you know, if you have any interest, apply?
Well, we'll be going through this next January again.
I think that's one of the goals of the Civilian Leadership Academy, is to generate that interest. So hopefully, as that goes on, we will see an increase.
Hopefully, because you're right, that was one of the goals.
Okay. It's time for comments from citizens here. Have we any?
No one has signed in as of yet.
Anyone in the audience like to speak? Okay, seeing none. Counselors, general discussion.
I'd like to see more sponge people in the police department.
Okay. Do you have any you would like to apply? Are you aware of?
I can walk in.
Okay. Counselor Prosser.
Abby, here.
Counselor Coe.
Happy New Year.
Counselor Miller.
I have a couple of things. I agree with Rita, and I think that there are programs out there that, that help to recruit minorities for police departments, so I really want to put a heavier focus on that in the coming, in the coming year. Chief Drumheller stole a couple of mine. The speed limit on State Street, I'm very excited about to see the signs at 25 miles an hour, so I'm going to tell people, please, slow down. The Arts Walk, Mark stole. We have 194 already pre-registered people participating. That's very exciting for this Saturday. January Borough Buzz is going to feature the Pottstown Library, so I'm looking at filming on the 16th of January and look for that at the end of the month. I'm also very excited about the Phillies Fire Company doing this pilot program for the Citizens Fire Academy. And by the way, we stole that title from the Citizens Leadership Academy. And I'd like to see it ultimately expand for participation in all the, the fire companies and the fire chief, and making that a, a great community event. And that also having the same, similar goal as the Citizens Leadership Academy, to get more people actively involved. And I'd like to say, the best Christmas gift of all, even though it's a little late, is the not delaying of the hiring of a police officer. I can't thank our police department for everything that we do, that they do, and we put more and more responsibilities on them every day. So it's very important that we have a full police force.
Mayor Thomas.
Comment, thank you.
You're good?
Well, for me, I, I would like to wish everyone a most prosperous and happy New Year, and keeping things positive. I did actually get a number of calls from constituents with good news. The focus seemed to be the happenings in, in Pottstown on High Street over the holidays. People were pleased with that. A number of calls about an enterprise that is at least partly in the borough, and that's Sunnybrook. I heard a number of calls coming in saying what a great time that they had on New Year's Eve. I wasn't there for that, and I'm sorry I missed it. But I was there for the Christmas Eve buffet, and I want to thank the Gallotti family and the others for what they did. It was phenomenal. Probably one of the best Christmas Eve dinners I've ever had. So with that, happy New Year to all. Please, sir and executives, nothing for this evening. In that case, Medina adjourned.